Welcome to the council meeting, City of Jackson, January 18th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to first introduce Sabrina Shelby to bring forward the invitation, and then we will stand and also do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Sabrina?
Let us pray. Father, right now, we come just thanking you and praising you for another day. We thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your mercy. And it is because of those mercies that we are not consumed. So, Father, we ask right now that you invoke your Holy Spirit into this meeting. Because you said, "With two or three are gathered together in your name, you'll be in the midst of us." So, Father, we ask that you come into the midst of us, that we may do what we are called to do for this city. Father, help us to understand that together we stand, and divided we fall. And if we were to place our hope, our trust, and faith in you, then no weapon formed against this city would prosper. And, Father, if you be for us, then who can be against us? So, Father, we ask that you just come into the midst of us. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of who you are. Father, you never commanded us to like one another, but you did command that we love one another. So, let everything and every decision that is made on this day be done from a place of love. Love for you, love for this city, and love for one another. We pray for the mayor and his absence. We pray for his family. We pray for his administration. We pray for the city council and their families. In every department that is represented here today, we ask that you have your way in this place and in this city. Father, again, we just thank you for who you are and for what you're about to do. And as always, I thank you that you always hear my prayer. It is in Jesus's name that we do pray. Amen.
Okay, before we move forward on the agenda, I would like to open the floor to council members for any opening remarks or comments. Councilman Foote?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to open and close the meeting today in honor of Mr. Craig Allen Kennedy, a good friend of mine, member of the Christ United Church, and a member of the Sunday School class I attend. He's a great fellow. He passed away on December 29th.
Seeing no other comments, please let the record reflect that we do have four on the DS, and Councilman Griselle is joining us virtually. Moving forward on the agenda, let's move to consent agenda.
All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Sabrina?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor?
We're receiving. Take your advice.
Okay, it's five zero. Okay, we'll now move on to number nine, claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 170 to inclusive thereon on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,162,817.40 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Hold on just a moment, Sabrina. I just got notice that we need to bring up item number 15 before we bring up item number nine, so scratch that, and we'll move to number 15.
Order approving the payment of the sum of $300 for Jackson Police Department's membership in the Regional Organized Crime Information Center.
Sabrina?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay, it passes five zero, nine.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 170 to inclusive thereon on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,162,817.40 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Sabrina?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
On the claim?
On claims. Mr. Foote?
Somebody go over the larger claim.
We do need to add item 15, amend claims to add item 15.
I'll entertain a motion to amend claims. Sabrina?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to amend claims and add item number 15 to claims. We will now vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
It passes five zero. Okay, now we will move forward with claims. Can we hear the larger claims?
Sure. Louis Wright, CAO. We have the largest claims, our larger claims. The first one is Hemp Hill Construction Public Works in the amount of $1,017,294.3. And this is for water treatment plant corrosion, Fund Number 32, Water Sewer Capital Improvement. The second one is Dickerson and Bowen Public Works, $798,934.51. And this is for street resurfacing project PH1A, Fund 173, and this is 1% infrastructure tax. The next one is TransDev Services Planning and Development, $387,904.54. October 2023 Fixed Route Services, Fund Number 187 Transportation. The last one is TransDev Services Planning and Development, $377,803.94. September 2023 Fixed Route Services, Fund 187 Transportation. That concludes the larger claims.
Thank you, Mr. Foote.
I got a question on the, if there's someone here who can answer this. On the Hemp Hill Construction, is this one of the invoices that was past due and finally getting paid now? Because, I mean, the water treatment plant stuff should be, current stuff should be done, being paid through the Jackson Water, I think. Can somebody provide some information on this particular invoice?
Mr. Williamson?
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. Now, I can't speak to whether this is current or, you know, or something that was past due. To my knowledge, all of the work that Hemp Hill Construction is under contract to do at the water plant is funded through loans through the state SRF program. And if you'll recall, the way that's being handled is that Mr. Henifin is submitting those invoices to the city for payment, and then we're seeking, you know, reimbursement from the state. So, this is being paid for through SRF funding.
Okay, so we're paying, all right. Well, the, I guess, if you could get back to me when you get a chance, find out where we stand with Mr. with Hemp Hill Construction, because there was a point there where we owed them like $4 million or something in back invoices. I'm hoping that we're, find out where we stand on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak with the fiscal officer there in Public Works and find out.
Okay, any other questions or comments, colleagues, on claims? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, it passes four, one. Number 10, payroll.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 297652, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. Do we have any questions or comments on payroll? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes five zero. Item number 11.
Order appointing Elizabeth Brister to the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments on this? I have a comment. Elizabeth Brister is in my ward, and she is an active president of the Callaway PTO, PTA, and she is a phenomenal woman. So, if we haven't, I don't see her here today. Is she online?
She, but a president, Louis Wright, CAO. She is not here. Work assignment has her in New Orleans, but she did call to say that, as you know, she's coming off the planning board and going on the historic preservation board. So, we're going to maintain her presence, and she's been doing a phenomenal job serving on that board.
Wonderful. So, we can't entertain any questions right now, but if the council's appetite is to move forward, okay, thank you. All in favor of number 11, Elizabeth Brister?
Aye.
It passes five zero. Number 12.
Order appointing Taylor D. Thomas to the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Mr. Wright, would you please?
Sure, sure, thank you, Madam President. Louis Wright, is Dr. Thomas here? I don't see her in the audience, but Dr. Thomas has an impressive resume.
... as a volunteer in the, in the city government and specifically the planning department or the planning board. And so, he's a very engaged citizen and interested in the issues that confront the city, and I would encourage my council members to support his nomination.
Wonderful. Mr. Councilman Hartley?
Just wanted to thank you for stepping up and volunteering and contributing your time and other resources to the City of Jackson. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure, my honor, sir.
I just want to tell you how much we appreciate your being willing to serve. I'm sorry about my voice. You're being willing to serve and as a volunteer in this very important role. Thank you.
My pleasure, sir. Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
All.
All right, six zero. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you for your confidence. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Order reappointing Chris Myers to the planning board of the City of Jackson.
Sabrina?
Second.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All right, anyone, you have anything you want to say? No, Mr. Myers is not here, but I think we all know Mr. Myers, he's being reappointed to the planning board. Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero. Next item.
Order approving the payment of monies to the Mississippi Association of Chief of Police for Joseph Wade application and membership in the amount of $100.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Six zero. Next item.
Order approving the payment to ADNS Inc. for extended warranty for the FingerPro ID Palm Software and Programming Services obtained by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order approving payment of invoices for accident reconstruction training furnished officers of the Jackson Police Department by the Department of Public Safety and Mississippi Law Enforcement Officer Training Academy.
Sabrina?
Second.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order approving payment of invoices submitted by Animal Medical Center for Goods and Services received by the Jackson Police Department.
Sabrina?
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Foote?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious what, I know we've had some issues with animal control in the past, but this is for invoices submitted by Animal Medical Center for Goods and Services. I'm just curious what those are. If you could, for just information purposes, what, what are the services they provide in JPD?
Captain George Stevenson, Jackson Police Department. The, what they do is, is when we need animals to be euthanized, we're paying for the euthanization of the animals that we take to the animal hospital, to Mississippi State.
Okay, yes, sir. You don't take them all the way to Mississippi State?
No, sir. They have a, they have a facility here local.
Personnel, how are we doing out there?
We are, we are still maintaining, Councilman Hartley. We are in the process of exploring privatizing animal control. We're trying to do RFI, Request for Information, so that we can see how we can move forward with this city with our small animal control.
How are we doing with picking up, retrieving animals?
Yes, sir. We are still operating on a day-to-day basis. We're still picking up as we get the calls. We prioritize calls for service with animal control, but we are still in operation.
And what is that telephone?
Sir, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask what the telephone number for animal control, if someone has a dead animal or something, they spot something.
That's our dispatch center. All they have to do is give the information to our dispatch center, dispatch general, within radio, small animal control, or myself, so we can get this taken care of.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any more questions or comments? All right, hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero. Next item.
Order approving payment of invoices for goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving barely second. It's moved probably second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor? Item carries, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order approving, approving payment of invoices for goods and services received from Global Industrial Company, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
It's, it's been moving probably second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero. Next item.
Order authorizing procurement of services and execution of an agreement from Protocol 911 LLC to provide IEAD 40-hour basic instruction course to eight communication clerk clerks.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item.
Order accepting.
Six zero, I'm sorry, next item.
Order accepting grant funds in the amount of $5,304 from the FY 2022 Mississippi Office of Homeland Security Grant Program, Community Preparedness, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute any and all documents needed to effectuate the receipt and use of the above grant money.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Six zero. Next item.
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract and related documents with Central Mississippi Planning and Development District Area Agency on aging to accept grant funds to support the congregate meals, home-delivered meals.
Next item.
Order revising the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for the Department of Human and Cultural Services and ratifying acceptance of IT equipment and authorizing payments to Chi International Corporation in the amount of $8,361.66.
So moved.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute two 48-month rental agreement, rental renewal agreements with Advantage Business Systems for two Conica Minota Biz Hub C650 ICE digital color systems to be used by Parks and Recreation Administrative Office and Park Maintenance Division.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving probably second. Any questions?
No, but Mr. Mohammed, this is the 100,000th printer, but we want to make sure you have one, or in copier.
All right. Don't blame it on the zoo now. All right, that's a, Mr. Martin? Okay, all right, six zero. Next item.
Order amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for the Department of Park and Recreation to transfer $106,695.25 of DFA-SB2971 Pete Brown Golf Course funds from the other professional service and park and recreation equipment categories to the building plus structure categories, lawn plus garden equipment category, and non-capitalized equipment category to purchase equipment and improve the irrigation system at the Pete Brown Golf Facility.
Sabrina?
Second.
It's moved probably second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Hartley?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed, I'd like to hear what you're going to purchase and do for Pete Brown?
Yes, ma'am. Abraham Mohammed Parks and Rec. Good morning, all. Yes, ma'am. The main reason for the move is for the irrigation system that is completely dated. We would need to change not only the, the piping system for the irrigation, but the computerized heads, the sensors, and the computer itself that operates the, the overall irrigation system altogether. In addition to that, we're looking to build onto the cart barn, the, where we'll be able to wash the carts on a daily basis, be able to store them properly, be able to secure them more properly, so I won't have to come to you and ask for money for carts that's been stolen anymore, as well as to get a greens mower that will allow us to keep the T-boxes and the greens and the fairways cut. So, this budget move is, is essential to be able to do those things.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Councilman Griselle?
Mr. Mohammed, good morning. Is, is there a plan to go ahead and start killing off the grass on a Grove Park golf course?
Yes, sir, there is. Mr. Crump and myself, we're meeting with Mr. Abdullah Aziz, who's our in-house chemist, for lack of better term. We're going over to put over a plan so that we can make the course as we go into the spring walkable and playable at that time. In addition to that, we have a plan that we're putting together that we'll bring forth towards some state legislators and other business interest people who would help us be able to kind of reimagine how we're going to do the course altogether. We're looking to make it a driving range as well as a five-hole golf course at this point, is what we're looking to do. So, yes, sir, we'll be meeting Friday to get those things into play and taken care of. Again, that's Mr. Crump, Mr. Aziz, and myself for spraying, robust spraying plan that we're going to do to get it under control.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, congratulations. Next item.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Order requesting ratification of past services performed and approving payment to Robert Earl Smith doing business at Smith Tree Service in the amount of $11,200 for tree removal services previously performed at City Hall Grove Park Municipal Golf Course Pete Brown Golf Facility in the Jackson Zoo during the months of June, August, and September 2023, which falls under fiscal year 2022-2023.
Sabrina?
Second.
It's been moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Mr. Mohammed, why are we so late in making the payment?
We had to get the corrected invoices from Mr. Smith. That was the, the bill was actually a little higher, but we needed to make an adjustment because some of the other services that was supposed to be performed was actually done in-house. So, this is a reduced rate of what it was, so I didn't want to have to come twice to ratify something. I wanted to bring what the actual facts was to begin with.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero. Next item.
Order requesting approval of future professional heating, plumbing, and air conditioning maintenance and repair services and approving payments to United Plumbing and Heating Company for the City of Jackson Department of Parks and Recreation Jackson Zoo.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six zero. Next item.
Order amending the order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease and management agreement with Kush Sports Group doing business, doing business at overtime sports of the Smithville Will, Will Stadium.
Second.
So moved. It's moving probably second on this item. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Because we have not had the benefit of a work session, because this is, you know, I, I would like to have some time to really unpack this and get, you know, really fully educated on, on this whole thing, and we haven't had that opportunity. And so, I'm just wondering if my colleagues, Mr. President, if you'd be willing to just table this to the next meeting, unless there is a time-sensitive reason why it needs to move forward.
Is, is, is this time-sensitive?
Yes, sir, it is. I'd like to call for Mr. Jockey, he could give more insight as well. But yes, sir, it is a time-sensitive matter for it. It's time for the contract to be renewed. They are a managing company there. Mr. Jockey, you can speak to it.
Jockey, in the mayor's office, is time-sensitive from a perspective of there are other contract negotiations going on? I think that if we could have a conversation about it as soon as possible, that would be good, but there are other negotiations going on with, you know, other entities.
Is, is this just, because, because my memory, is this dealing with somewhat reducing what their fee would be annually? And if I'm not mistaken, his ask was because of the amount of capital, our finance that he has put into the new lights, the restrooms, and all of the building, and he's wanting to make more investments, so he's asking for a reduced amount of front so that he can continue to put his own capital into this business?
That's correct, and that's from a cash perspective. Excuse me, he's put over $3 million into the facility, but also the public benefit perspective, the fact that JPS is able to play at the fields for free as well. So, that, those are the two premises of the reason why we decided to renegotiate the contract.
Okay, all right, Councilman Foote?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had some specific questions and, excuse me, and reading, reading through this that I didn't understand. I had some specific questions and, excuse me, and reading, reading through this that I, I didn't understand. But, but I want to make, it says in the third whereas, it says the city entered into this lease agreement um, for ten years, rent was gonna be a hundred and twenty five thousand per year, and then there's gonna be option for two more additional terms of ten years, or twenty percent of all the gross marketing revenue, so it'll, I guess, I assume that's at least a hundred and twenty five thousand a year. And we go on down here, and then the, um, the, so I guess, uh, there's an rearage or shortfall, I guess, they hadn't paid us a hundred thousand dollars in the seventh whereas?
That's.
Okay, um, the, and then the next whereas, it says, as a result of this amendment to the lease, ongoing payments shall be reduced to reflect a payment due upon execution amount of twelve thousand five hundred, which shall cover debt service fees. And, yeah, I guess, the, and long and short of it, I mean, this thing gets really confusing to me trying to read it and understand it. And, and I agree with Ms. Lindsay in before signing something that's, or amending a ten year agreement that we ought to make sure we understand, you know, all the, how much money's actually been paid to the city, what, you know, liabilities we may have, and if they're putting a bunch of money in that's capex, uh, they, they, uh, that's not fair to them if they're putting up a bunch of money, and I, I question who's, who's gonna, if, if J, JPS is, is pay, is playing for free? You know, they just closed down.
This won't be a double A team. This, 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 the Hank Aaron Sports Academy basically is an academy that engages in youth baseball, so we're having a youth sport conversation, not necessarily double A, right? So.
Yeah, I, I'm fine.
Fair enough.
Benefits of the parks. But go ahead. Okay, I, I just, I, I'd like to know more about it, not, not right here, not, you, you know, fill on all the details.
Hit it, hit it, hit it, hit it. Hit your mic.
I'm sorry.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
All right, Mr. Griselle?
Well, I, I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Keaton and the gentleman who, you know, who has managed the stadium for quite a while, a lot of money has been invested in that, but I also want to think about this. I think about our children, you know, our children have to have somewhere to play baseball. Our schools no longer have baseball fields, Grove Park Baseball Field is a shot. Um, and I think that, you know, if we approve this today, this is gonna be an investment in them. And so I would really like to keep that in the forefront, I understand the finances and everything, but if we don't invest, you know, we're gonna have to find something else for our children to play. Our young people are screaming for something to play, and I know you all remember the conversation with, uh, with Coach Chitum time and time again. We really need to really think about this, and, uh, hopefully we can wait and get it for a vote today, thank you.
All right, thank you, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Councilman Harley.
I just want to comment, and I'm not sure how this is gonna fit into a role picture, but we still have that, uh, we got the Hughes Field over there off of Ellis Avenue in my ward that's doing trem- a tremendous job of, uh, providing, uh, uh, the, uh, sports arena for folks. Again, um, uh, you know, I'd be willing to table this or whatever if other folks have questions, but, um, that's not out.
Time ago, uh, actually Senator Horn, uh, and a lot of people from the Jackson delegation went to Atlanta to meet with the Hank Aaron Sports Academy. Um, he has received letters of commitments, uh, from financial, uh, partners. Uh, also Atlanta Braves, when the Atlanta Braves, I was on my way back from lunch, he called, he was like, hey, we got the general manager from Atlanta Braves here, you need to come by, you know, um, um, and what? Oh, he was willing to show, but due to the weather and how this meeting failed, uh, there was no work session. Um, you know, I, I, I think for, you know, of course, it's up to the will of this body, but I think to expedite making sure that he can continue to work on some of the deals, uh, and the financial commitments to basically show the support from the city, so that he can ensure those financial commitments. Uh, I think it's feasible for us to pass this, but I do think it's necessary uh, for us to all be updated and not just on a one-on-one or two-on-two basis, but for us all to know. I know that he talked to myself, I know he talked to Mr. Griselle, because I know that the Hank Aaron Sports Academy bleeds over into a lot of our parks, uh, within the city of Jackson, which I think is beneficial. Uh, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a good program, uh. Okay, all right.
Ma- Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, uh, I lo- my concerns have been addressed, I think, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't rushing into something. And I am very grateful that, that JPS students have a place to play, I am real curious, though, as to why they're not paying rental fee to use this facility. I mean, if they were had, if they had their own baseball field, they would certainly be having to pay maintenance and upkeep for it. And so, I mean, I, I, I would like to know why that is. Um, s- so, you, but I've, and I did read this all carefully, so I feel, I feel like my, my issues have been resolved, thank you.
Okay, all right, and look, Councilwoman Lindsay, I am very curious to know the answer about JPS and a lot of things that they're doing over there. But another day, here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item carries five, one, next item.
Order ratifying purchase order number two four zero 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 one eight three to Vehicle Technical Consultants, Inc. in the amount of seven thousand four hundred ten dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase order adjustment and related documents with Vehicle Consultants, Inc. to provide transit fleet turnover post inspection.
So moved.
It's moving probably second, any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Budget to revise funds across categories from CDBG program years twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and CDBG CV program year twenty twenty grants funds.
So moved.
Second, it's moving probably second on this item, any questions or comments? All right, uh, Director Dotson, at some point, you, 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 at some point, uh, I know that there have been a lot of questions from the community and other nonprofits about CDBG, the opportunities, et cetera. Uh, I plan on having a town hall pretty soon, but at some point, are you really, or do you have some things that you're ready to roll out at those town halls so the constituents can understand?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's Chloe Dotson.
Yeah, Chloe always read that shit. Uh, yes, Councilman Harley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Ms. Dotson, I, I too am concerned that the public isn't getting enough information about the overall plan, uh, direction that this is going. And I too would like to have a town hall meeting to discuss CBDG housing initiatives, perhaps, uh, rental, uh, program. But it seems as though this is part of a bigger picture, and I think the community needs to be aware of a lot, a lot of details and how it's gonna impact their communities. So I would be asking, I would be asking you for a town hall.
Whoever, whoever, yeah, is, daughter, if, unless you gonna play the OJs, mute your, mute your phone, all right?
That was me, I apologize.
Oh, my goodness.
But next time, play the OJs, sir, I'll play the boom.
It's not even my device.
All right.
I do wanna make a, a point, if you take a look, it's twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two funds. So what we're doing is we're cleaning up back year funds so that we can ru- roll out these programs and have a, a smooth running, uh, machine, so. These are back funds that hadn't been spent, been sitting there, we get in trouble for that. And so this is moving, uh, money over for the must, much needed, um, fire department equipment.
When is the rollout?
The rollout for?
You just mentioned that you're cleaning it up so that you could roll out.
Yeah, so we'll, so, um, the Neighborhood Service Division is, is open and rolling now, so people can apply for those grants. And then we should release HOPWA, Home, and ESG, um, grant applications here soon. But I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna open up the applications until we've pretty much cleaned up everything else, there's no point of starting two fires when I need to put out, you know, one, so, um, this is cleaning up, but we'll more than welcome to talk at town hall about the new programs.
Certainly appreciate it, I, I believe that the people will benefit, because we're always getting questions, what about rental assistance, what about housing assistance? Uh, roof repair, there's a whole lot of questions, and I think it'd be good if we just had you in the community, just, uh, telling, uh, basically showing your short-term and long-term goals, uh, for this program, thank you.
All right, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President, now, my question, uh,
And this is for the purchase of fire equipment, but, you know, for example, right now, we.
That's not what it says.
This is for.
It says. Director, Director Dotson, if you would go, just briefly go over the exception that's allowed for, you know, fire safety when it comes to CDBG? Just, just kind of go over what CDBG funds can be used for, so that you can.
So this is, this is for fire station equipment, safety equipment. CDBG funds can be used, um, for, for services such as this that provide, uh, services to low and moderate income folks. And so as long as it hits that geography where it's serving low to moderate income people, it qualifies into, as an eligible activity using CDBG.
Because it says in here, fire station rehab. Now, and then pre- improve fire stations, now, to me, it's a different terminology than. Name, Fire Station Number Six Rehab, then goals supported improved fire stations. Well, I'm all for improving fire stations, I just wanna make sure that we're doing it with legal money.
Yes, it's amendment, so originally it was for fire rehab, and so I, we, we end up getting into a space where, um, those projects take so long to finish, for example, Fire Station Twenty that we're wrapping up now. So rather than spending on a fire station, right, we could take a year or two, um, we're using the money for an eligible expense, which is fire station equipment. So it's able, it enables us to move quicker, to spend more CDBG money on eligible activity rather than spending on what it was originally supposed to use for, which is fire station rehab.
See, then, then the, this memo over here on page thirty two, whatever it is, it needs to say that, that's not what it says. I mean, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that's not what the thing says, it says.
Amendment, so we've made the amendment, originally it was supposed to be used for fire station rehab. We've made an amendment, and now we're moving that money over to safety equipment, so if you look at the.
Where's the, where's the amendment?
If, if you look at the order, the order is moving money from capital outlay contingency, which is construction, over to safety equipment. So originally it was for rehab, that takes too long, we're moving it over to another, another eligible expense, which is the safety, fire safety equipment.
Okay, I just, all right, I'm just curious, that, that, what I choose to, choose to read here is not what you're talking about, so. It'll be it.
Yeah, and, and just, just for clarity, this is in order to.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, 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 um, we're, we're not gonna get in trouble for spending.
We'll get in trouble if we don't spend this money.
Well, I'm talking about getting in trouble for spending federal money incorrectly.
I, I think, I think this has been vetted by.
It's an eligible expense, an eligible activity.
Legal?
The amendment was approved by HUD to allow this.
Okay.
I couldn't make this move until the amendment was approved by HUD.
Well, it's confusing when you read the document, it says one thing and you're talking about something else. Okay, thank you.
All right, any, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item carries five, one, Chief Owens, good to see you, Samantha, sir. Next item.
Order authorizing revising the Department of Planning and Development fiscal year twenty twenty four budget to revise funds across categories from program years twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, home investment partnership grant funds.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
You in favor? All right, that's six zero. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to amend the executive memorandum of understanding between the City of Jackson and the National League of Cities Institute Southern Cities Economic Inclusion Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item, any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain, all right, we have five and one abstention. Uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute grant agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Irma Development for ESG, Home, HOPWA, and CDBG funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, we have five and one abstention. Uh, next item.
Order amend in the Department of Planning and Development's fiscal year twenty twenty two, three, twenty twenty four budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's moving probably second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? You good with it? All right, item carries six zero. All of, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Jackson and Kiva Micro Funds to operate a Kiva Hub.
Chloe Dotson, Director Planning, the Kiva Hub is a digital platform that allows minority organizations, it's, it's a program that we were introduced to, through, uh, to through NLC, um, and it's a, basically a platform that allows minority, um, businesses to access loans at a lower interest rate. So instead of them going out and doing, you know, cash checking with, you know, loan sharks, they're able to go through this platform, everyone, all the businesses in City of Jackson that qualifies are able to go through this platform and access small business loans at a lower interest rate, so we thought that this was a great, um, a great opportunity. Um, NLC, NLC, uh, showed us, um, this particular platform. Another thing, and, and I would like to request, uh, if it pleases the council, an amendment on the floor. Item thirty four that you just passed, um, is actually providing, it's an amendment to. That we originally wanted to use, we, we're gonna use, um, NLC funds, if it pleases the council, and so.
Oh, we have to go back?
Oh, 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 which, which item is the amendment?
Oh, we haven't voted yet.
Yeah, and the fourth whereas, it says, we'll use CDBG funds, we originally wanted to do that, but NLC was uh, gracious enough to go ahead and, uh, amend their con- uh, contract with us to increase it by the amount of money needed to pay for this program. They really, really want the program to exist in the City of Jackson, so we're fortunate that they are, uh, willing to pay for it.
Councilwoman Lee.
I'd like to make a motion to amend item number thirty five in the fourth whereas to reflect.
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven, to reflect NLC funds instead of CDBG funds.
Second. All right, we have that motion to second on the floor. Clerk, do you have, for clarity, are, are, are y'all keeping track? Clerk, do you have for clarity? Are, are, are y'all keeping track where this amendment is? Y'all got it? Uh, uh, any other questions or comments? Yes, only amendment.
Back to this um regarding, regarding this fourth whereas, it says the City of Jackson received fifteen thousand dollars. Now, did we get that from C D B G?
No.
That's also from N L C.
So we got, we got fifteen thousand dollars from N L C and they, and they are going to um fund, also fund year two. I guess that'd be another fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so that agenda item that you just approved, amending the contract with N L C, uh, amended by going up by the amount of money needed.
So it's for both year one and two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We're very, we're very thankful.
Can I, let, let me ask a question. Uh. This is approved when from N L C?
The original contract, I would have to go back and look what the original.
It wasn't approved since November, was it?
I don't.
Okay, all right, cool. All right. All right, any other questions on amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yeah, any other questions or comments on the item as amended? And colleagues, I would just ask because in my new position, I'll be approving this and I wanted to make sure there was no conflict. In case I had to recuse myself. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries uh six, zero. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the Mississippi Urban Research Center to serve as consultant for the City of Jackson, Jackson to conduct evaluation assessments for the W K Kellogg Foundation-funded project Economic Pathways to Human Dignity, Building Occupational Opportunities and Economic Growth.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Let's move on proper second on this item. Uh, any questions or comments? I'll just say, colleagues, uh, the Mississippi Urban Research Center, uh, out Merk, out of Jackson Medical Mall, which is also a partnership with Jackson State, is an extremely well researched program and they've been around for a while. Uh, it used to be under Dr. Mark Cologne and just wanted to just say, I believe in the work that these guys do. All right, uh, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six.
Over on the first page.
Oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
All right. The item is still on the floor. I'm going to recall for this vote. All right, go ahead, Mr. Foot.
Thank you. It says on the one, two, three, four, five, fifth whereas, wait a minute, see. That the City of Jackson submitted a request for twelve-month extension, okay? If you turn the page, the next, the third to last whereas, or the next to last whereas, the last whereas. The City of Jackson will compensate M U R C for its services as a consultant in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars per month. On the one side, it says twelve-month extension, but over here, we're only paying them seven thousand dollars per month, which wouldn't get you to twelve months. It would only get you to ten months.
Okay, so the reason why it's written like that is it's not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. So even if they have seven thousand dollars each month, it's not going to exceed um.
So it stops after ten?
It stops after seven. It, it stops after seventy. Now, someone, you know, the first couple of months, they could only charge twenty-five hundred, right? So at the baseline is seventy thousand dollars. Correct, correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with Jeff Coat Fence and Access Control to provide routine gate maintenance at the J Train Administrative Maintenance Facility seventeen eighty-five Highway Eighty West, Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Just a.
Yes.
Just a comment. Uh, Ms. Dodson, please pass along to the division manager over at J Train. Doing, they're doing an excellent job in keeping that part of Highway Eighty clean. Uh, and that building definitely stands out as being professional uh around other buildings that have been, you know, need to be knocked down. J Train is a, is a good site for Highway eighteen, uh, Highway Eighty. So please pass along that to the staff and I look forward to voting in affirmative for this.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six, zero. Next item.
Order authorizing the City of Jackson to utilize the professional services of the Armstrong Company for the purpose of relocating and storing personal property belonging to Lena Tyler.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, item carries six, zero. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the notice of satisfaction of reverter clause and quick claim deed for parcel number sixty-five dash six-three to Midtime Partners, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, six, zero. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to approve the reimbursement of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to visit Jackson for fence repairs and debris removal from city-owned lots adjacent to the Jackson Convention Center.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Harley.
Okay, uh, Ms. Dodson, we have on here fence repair. Uh, and I would just wonder if you could explain repair versus uh, I, I know they probably uh doing events but of uh temporary barriers and stuff, so could you kind of explain what fence repair you're, you're talking about?
Yes, so if you look, Chloe Dodson, Director of Planning, if you look in your um packet, there's a few pictures. Um, you might um have seen um the repairs that taken place, but there were actual fence repairs that had taken place right before a major event in the city and they wanted to look nice. So we said that we would contribute to the beautification of um that, that particular area. So in your packet, you'll see um some, some photos.
And these are, are they portable?
Portable.
The, the fence, or is it just they're stationary?
Well, these are, these are, these are permanent.
Okay.
Fence, fencing mechanisms.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee.
I just want to say those fences, they did the, the covers of them with like green, with the logo. It was, it was done beautifully and honestly, it was, it was well done.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'd like to, you know, mentioning, talking about the convention center. Um, I'm hoping that, that um in this legislative session, we might get some monies from uh state to help us with that parking lot. That would really be a big win if we could get some.
I, I hope so too. I hope that um whatever ask or whatever you all adore, the administration is doing. I think that um the people at the state are looking are looking for the council to be involved in some way, form or fashion. And as of right now, the thought is that this is going on without the council being involved. Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with the Jackson Resource Center to provide workforce development evi- event planning services for the W K Kellogg Foundation-funded project Economic Pathways to Human Dignity, Building Occupational Opportunities and Economic Growth.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Uh, yes, Councilman Harley?
Yes, Ms. Dodson. Uh, can you explain uh the selection process uh, uh, for this? Or were there no other groups out there that provides uh this type of training? Uh, and so can you explain how we got to this point to select this particular vendor?
Yeah, I can, I can let, I don't know if Ms. Heeker Hoover's on. I was not involved in the selection or evaluation process for um this particular entity.
My name is Heka Hoover, Economic Development. So we were looking for someone to assist us with our workforce development. We um sent out a blast for um local C B Os that will be able to provide those transportation and monitoring services for the workforce development program and uh J R C, uh, and I think three others were the, the respondents that we received. And so they were selected based on the cost and the total services that they were able to provide for the workforce development.
So uh J R C provided the lowest cost here?
That is correct.
Okay, and what type of services are they're going to provide?
So this was initially for our workforce development program where we had students that were um uh going through high, matriculating through. Are the Heinz Raymond campus. And so this is an extension of what J R C has already provided.
Okay, thank you.
Tover, really quickly, how many, how many um youth um graduated with our degree for free program and were able to receive their um educational certificates?
So we had twenty graduates and all of those graduates have now been placed with various entities such as the City of Jackson, um Nissan, um Continental tires. So they are um have in fact received their, their career certificates and will be um gainfully employed as a result of it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I follow up? One question, one other question, Ms. Dodson? And that is uh, uh, just perhaps something to think about. Uh, we have school closing with uh Jackson Public Schools and I've already spoken with the, with the superintendent. Like construction, plumbing, the stuff that we need every day. And perhaps if uh, if you think it's a good idea, maybe reach out to J, J P S and look at some of those old buildings, perhaps they can come up with a curriculum. Uh, you know, but we have uh individuals from, you know, dropouts. We have people that are in school to continue to get their diploma. And a lot of folks uh may not want to go to a higher education. They may want to go into trade. I think with the advent of these school closing, we can use some of these schools as trade centers. Uh, and so that's just food for thought. I mentioned it to Dr. Green and uh, and said, okay, we're not educating our children there anymore. Perhaps we can educate uh young adults that's ready to get into the workforce right away. So thank you for uh just considering that.
Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
It's an abstention. All right, we have five and one abstention. Uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to a professional service agreement with Swin- Swindman Law Firm, P L L C, to obtain a H one B temporary work visa from Department of Labor for Sandra Masigo.
So moved.
Second. All right, let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, um, Ms. Dodson, could you please explain this to us?
Yeah.
I will do my best. I found out I, I am very far away from understanding uh temporary and permanent visas. If, if I'm saying this right, and please help if I'm not, but Sandra Masigo is a uh student that we pulled from Ball State University that got her master's degree in urban and regional planning. Work here at the City of Jackson. And so this is to allow the paperwork to be done for a temporary visa that's basically a lottery, like maybe one, four are able to get it. But this is enough money to at least have her, the paperwork done and for us to try for the next three years to get her temporary stay here to be able to work.
Um, so I guess my question is, um, I, I, my question is why is the City of Jackson having to pay these legal fees?
Yeah, um, so in the past, and I don't know if H R is on the line, but in the past, um, when we, before we even hired her, I talked to H R and asked if this is something that has been done before or does the city do it? Um, they told us that they do. They've, they've done this temporary in the past. They haven't done the permanent, like the green card. Um, they're saying that, you know, generally the, the, the person would pay for that green card before temporary, considering you're going to be working for the city. It's pretty much like an endorsement um to allow someone to work for the city. Um, and they have done it before. This is nothing new when you're trying to bring in new talent from different areas. Um, sometimes this is a cost um to get those quality students.
I, I guess.
Our employees.
Quick follow up. I guess my, um, I guess my, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering why this employee wouldn't pay these legal costs herself.
Um, so outside of it's been done before, I'm not sure why they would, because we're trying to attract. Okay, the Department of Labor requires the employer to pay. There you go. I didn't know that. See, that's how little I know.
That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, Councilwoman Harley.
And I, since this is somewhat of a unique issue to come before a city council and we didn't have a work session to discuss this. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Are, is there anyone else in this situation with the City of Jackson?
I'm not sure. That's an H R question.
Okay, okay.
I, I wouldn't know.
Nobody else in your department then?
I don't have any employees um that I have pulled from a graduate school that has her type of talent um that I would be willing to offer.
I'm, I'm just asking, are there any others out there?
Um, not within my department. I'm sure that, you know, I've been told this is not new. This is not the first time this has been done, so I'm sure there are others. That would be an H R question for the Department of H R.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Foot.
Yeah, did we, so in fact, if she doesn't have this visa now, does that mean that we hired her illegally?
Uh, that's another H R question. I don't believe so. Uh, but I know that we, if this does not happen, then we're basically not endorsing her um, her temporary work visa and she would, would be in jeopardy of, of deportation.
Where's she from? What's her native country?
Kenya.
Kenya?
Yes.
How'd she get to the, to Jackson?
She went to Ball State University and achieved her master's degree in urban and regional planning and applied to be our special projects officer.
If we're going to get too detailed in personnel information, we're going to have to go into exec session. All right.
She was not hired illegally.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Don't do this again.
Oppose? Griselle, what say you?
He lied.
Oh, oh, there he is. Okay.
Mr. President, abstaining from this chair. Abstain.
You abstaining?
Abstain.
All right, thank you. Four, one no, one abstention. Next item.
Order ratifying procurement of pest control services from Bryant Pest Control for the Traffic Maintenance Division and authorizing payment to said vendor.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move on probably second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries six, zero. Next item.
Order ratifying the procurement of surveying and related services from Beard Engineering, Inc. related to the sewer main collapse at Lawrence Street and Saint Anne Street in emergency repair contracts.
So moved.
Second.
This will move with, with the speed of urgency. Probably second. Any questions or comment on this item? Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Thank everybody who's gotten us to this point. Thank you.
All right, yeah, uh, Robert Lee, uh, thank you. And it's, I see you got your fatigue jacket on and you know, I was complimenting you about three weeks ago because you had a shirt tied and a suit on, but. All right, item care six zero. Next item.
Order authorizing payment of $37,954.89 to Pamela and Jimmy Kelly as full and complete settlement of property damage claim and no admission of liability.
So moved. Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any question or comment? All in favor? Next item.
Order authorizing payment of $73,223 to Jamal Clark as full and complete settlement of property damage and no admission of liability.
So moved. Second.
Is there someone that can speak to this item?
Yeah, yeah, we got motion second.
I got a question. Is this the one I think it is? It is? Do, do we need to go into executive session?
Thank you. Depends on the questions, but possibly.
Name and title.
No, I'm sorry, Drew Martin, interim city attorney.
Go ahead. I'm listening. I think we might end up going into executive session.
You know, there's an hefty price tag on this and I want to see if, is this something that routinely happens around the city?
No. No, and especially not at these amounts.
Okay, I mean, force the damage or?
We see, we see a fair number of sewer and water backup cases that where the city has liability and requires evidence of the actual damage. And often that includes some relocation expenses as well during the repair process when it's sewer backup especially.
Okay, okay. So this has to do with the sewer backup. This had nothing to do with election?
Not that I know of.
Oh. Okay.
I, I don't.
I just wanted to see, are there any other problems in that area, you know, with sewer backup? I mean, is it, is it widespread or is just his house?
So I'm not aware of another sewage backup situation in that neighborhood that's related to this. We do see that sometimes, right? There are, there are places where, especially after storms, you have that backup and it, if it happens at one house, there is a higher likelihood we'll see it in other areas. That's happened for, to my knowledge, that's not the situation here.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious. I know where the house is at. I've been there. I know that you have some drainage issues there. I didn't know that you had a sewage backup issue there as well. It's, do you know if it's been taken care of?
So, so it's my understanding that it has. Let me say this about this one before we go too far. This was not a case that I worked on personally and this settlement came across, I'm sorry. Sewage backup into this house.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer.
Okay, okay.
Listen.
I don't have any more questions.
I think that we have had these conversations before. Here is my problem. Out of all of the citizens who have suffered problems due to whether dry or wet SSOs around the city that was at the city's fault admittedly, where the city was doing work, I've never seen a claim for this much.
Right.
I, I understand who he is. I just, yeah, I, I know. It troubles me because I'm thinking of a young lady that stays in Lost Lake Circle whose issues were more severe. And all they did was send somebody out to clean it up, right? And, and she had to nearly pay a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And, and so if, if we're going to be in the business of making people whole, let's not just make certain individuals whole, let's make all people whole.
So Councilman Bates, my suggestion would be, we can provide you a little more detail about the amount here, but my suggestion is we do that in executive session.
Okay.
But understood, understanding what you just said.
Yeah, my, my, my compass is because of the amount of people I think we all have called.
Yeah.
With SSOs who have all had problems. And it seems like when it, the claims filed over in risk management, there's picks and chooses to who gets what and how. And I, I, I'm aware of this situation, but I've seen situations far worse and I've seen them denied. And I, and I know even after people from Public Works have came out and said, you know what, this is our bad because we got this back right here and it seems like it's not catching. And so I am concerned. And I'll just leave it at that.
Sure.
I would draw my motion.
I would, well, before I withdraw it.
Are we going into executive session? We, we want, we want to go into executive session?
I, I think we probably need to stop talking about it and do that.
Yeah.
I think we need to do that.
You think, you think we need to?
Yes, sir.
Councilman, there is a, a discussion item later for a city litigation review and we could go into executive session, discuss it at that point.
Okay, all right. So we were drawing a motion second just.
Well, I want to, one quick question.
Go ahead. Go, go, hold on. You, you haven't withdrawn officially.
And formally, I'm asking if you would like for me to do that.
Okay, let, let's, let's see what their question.
I just want to ask a question. When things like this happen and it's on the city's fault and there's, this is a large amount of money among other sewage issues that we've seen. Are there any?
Is, if, if it's okay with, with councilman, I'd like to address that when we go into executive session as well. There is an answer to that question.
That's fine.
Yes.
I got a generic question.
Go ahead.
Okay, on this item and the, and the item before it, it's got this language at the bottom that with the understanding that the city of Jackson is not admitting liability. And says that same, same thing. So I, I think we are liable. That's why we're paying them the money. So why do we have that language in at the back?
Let, let me stop there for a second. So, so generally speaking, the fact that the city or any defendant pays a settlement amount is not automatically admission liability. There's a lot of reasons that the city or any defendant might pay someone, including avoiding the cost of litigation, including the, the, the risks of additional exposures. So to pay someone who has a claim, even if it is not a certain claim.
So that's your standard language you have at the end of?
I, I wouldn't say it's standard, but it's very common.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Is, do, do we want to? Parks and Recs over two solid ways. There's still some challenges that we are working through those challenges at this time. But we're trying to get everything in place so that when we hit the ground, we're going to, you'll be seeing some noticeable changes within our right of way area, right of ways area.
You mentioned when you hit the ground, do you have a timeframe?
No, we're working out all of those details at this time. I said cutting season. Right. That would be, but we are working out all of those fine details that we need to have in place. There was some equipment that was transferred that we're having to put in the shop to get repaired so that we can hit the ground running by cutting season. We're, we're working together. Parks and Recs working with us. There's been some transfer of equipment. Solid Waste is going out to the garage looking at equipment that they can refurbish and use. So we're going through all of those steps necessary.
And I, and I appreciate that. And I, I, I encourage you to keep that momentum going. My biggest fear is it, it get dumped in another division. Up the city, especially the right of ways and stuff. And I don't want it hit in some division. And so budget wise, how are we doing?
We're doing as well as we can be at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
We are still working with MDOT in terms of the inmate program that we have going on. We have a meeting scheduled with them next week in order so that we can start that process on the right of ways of the state maintain rules and highways.
Good deal. And I, if there's anything, I will be meeting with Commissioner Simmons. With the Transportation Commissioner. If there's anything that I need to mention to him about for interstates or some of these state roads, then please let me know. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lee and a few others, there was some paving work done on Raymond Road near Sidewell. And I started getting a bunch of heated calls from a bunch of residents and the associations in the area about the, the quality of work that was done. And so Mr. Lee stated last week, I think it was last Friday, he was going to ride the area out and work with paving to smooth out the area. But, you know, we appreciate what Public Works does for us. We appreciate their, you know, the fact that they're doing all they can do. But, you know, when we execute work and when we complete it, it's got to be left to a certain standard. And I know we have a, a paving inspector. But I want to kind of see if, if Mr. Lee can speak to the plans to correct this area because I, I initially thought, based on what I was told from some of the residents in the area, that the work was completed by another government entity that has historically helped me out in the past with some paving work. But this was left ridiculously poor. And we know how the folks in Willowood, Western Hill, Brook Hollow, Carriage Hills and, you know, we know how they can be, you know, they're very engaged. And so we've been hearing a lot about this over the past couple of weeks. And I want to know from Mr. Lee, the plan to correct it and when.
Robert Lee, city engineer. I've got to get with our pave streets team, kind of figure out, one, what they did in the first place because I drove it and I had questions too. So I need to get with them. Obviously, we know with ICE duty, our focus on that, but now with the big thaw, I can get back on the paving side of the world and see what they did to begin with. And from that then determine, okay, here's what we did. Here's how we can go about making improvements to that one spot. But also look at operations going forward. You know, how do we avoid that work happening other places in North Jackson, West Jackson, Amy? So I need to have that discussion with our pave streets team to try to improve things going forward.
There was a question about whether or not we had a roller because clearly it's, it looks like a moon crater is over there. What is the process for paving it out and, and, and smoothing it out? And are you able to respond to why it was not done?
I can't answer that right now because I need to determine what they did in the first place, what equipment they used, what equipment they had available. And that can help determine how we fix that going forward. So I'm kind of very early on trying to determine what happened.
Is there a time window when I can expect a response from you about this? And I'm asking because the heat is on me right now. And so I would really like to get this fixed as quickly and as best as possible.
Give me a week to dig into it.
But they forget Mr. Griselda's number, but they all, every time I go there, what's Councilman Griselda's number? I need to call him about this. So I'm just letting you know. All right.
I got a lot of calls and emails about it, a lot.
It's serious. All right. And then on top of that, when you start talking about that, they start asking about sidewalks. But another discussion. Councilwoman Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was excited to see that this settlement had come, finally come into existence. And I think it was like for $10.5 million. Is that correct? 10.3, 10.5? And I'm just wondering if we have had any discussions whatsoever about how, if the administration has determined how this money is going to be used.
City attorney, the second part of that question is not for me. So I'll let Mr. Wright address that. The first part of that, the actual number, it turned out there was a calculation issue. It's still very close to 10.3, but it's about 10.28 or seven or something like that. The, the arbiter had to revise his opinion because of some calculation issues. That number was actually didn't go up because the Zurich also will owe for depreciation amounts on various of the properties that were settled. We're not sure of the exact amount yet, so I don't want to guess, but, but the number will go up, not down. There is also one other issue that I'll talk about in executive session related to that. There's one other claim against that money for a small amount of it. But, but in terms of how it's going to be spent, I certainly hope to see the attorney's office rewarded appropriately, but otherwise that's not a question for me.
Wright, Mr. Wright, if y'all had any conversation about how you see this money being used?
Yeah, Louis Wright, CAO. The administration has not had an in-depth discussion about the use of these funds. We were just made aware of it and the announcement was made last week and then we got hit with all of the winter.
We would appreciate you keeping the council informed as you move forward, as you move forward in that. We would appreciate you keeping the council informed as you move forward, as you move forward in that conversation. But I know a, a lot of our city buildings were hit very hard. I'll never forget that day in March of 2013. It was horrible. Um, but I want to just put in a plug that our libraries were hit especially hard. And we've seen a lot of decline in our libraries ever since March of 2013. And I would like for there to be some serious consideration about this money being used to help mediate some of the issues relating to the facilities that our libraries have.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't be more, you know, forceful today, but it's in my heart. I mean this.
We made note of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Wright, um, when, when this happened, of course, um, I believe that was Jenny Jones that did an assessment, her and some other groups that did an assessment. Do you have access to that?
I do not. I can get that information and just take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I think it's important because I think that we have to make sure, um, especially in lieu of what Councilwoman Lindsay said, that, you know, the buildings that suffered though that damage, that either they're restored or there's some plan uh to deal with it. Um, I will say this, and I don't mind saying this on the record, but your door wealthy had extreme damage during that hailstorm. And now we're having to relocate as a, as a problem of the depreciation. And Tisdale and uh Virgie P Middleton. I, I remember it, but there was a list. I believe Jenny Jones and some other did the assessment.
Okay.
Uh, 2014, 2015, somewhere up in there. And I'm sure that they're deteriorating over time, you know, to not being addressed properly.
Kind of like, go ahead. On this topic anyway, the, the, um, I concur with both your comments and Ms. Lindsay that um, the um, we've wrestled with the maintenance uh for our facilities. We got all these buildings across the city and a lot of them, especially the libraries, suffered damage that ended up getting worse and worse because we weren't repairing them on a timely basis. And this, you know, reinforces the need for a bigger line item or a bigger amount of money allocated to maintenance of our own facilities in the ci- in the budget that we, we've gone through. And, you know, I think that would be, you know, healthy, healthy for the city longer term to have that line item include increased. We think we increased it from $300,000, which was- And I, I think the libraries are an important cause that should benefit from this. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. Uh, garbage RFP status foot?
Yeah, the um, we're getting closer, I guess, we're about eighty-five days or eighty days out from when the current garbage contract, emergency contract expires. Uh, I would encourage the administration to get, uh, make their decisions based on the RFP uh responses they got and bring it to the council in a timely manner so that uh we don't get hung up again with, you know, um, a, too much drama and intrigue. The sooner we get to it and, and we can respond to the administration's um presentation, I think the better off the city is. The-
Mr. Wright, uh, uh, in my particular ward, I get two things. At grocery stores, at uh other gas station, whatever, folks come up to me. They said, I just got two things to say to you. Number one, y'all need to fix that garbage contract and get it out. And number two, right before they start, uh, start the great beat down, they said, you guys need to work together. Guys need to put aside whatever, whatever. And, and they're absolutely right on both parts. And the second part is, we need the administration and the executive branch and legislative branch to sit down. This is what people are asking for, sit down and go through things. And this garbage thing would be a good way to show the public that that's what we're doing. Doesn't have to be any informal, but we need to get- Their interest in the center of what we're doing and we're on that thing together. And so that's what, that's what little old ladies tell me and they wear me out. But they're telling me those two things. Number one, uh-uh, don't do another garbage problem. And number two, get your act together, government, city government. And sometimes that just re- reminds us to go back to the basics. And the basis is closing off a room, and this is what they tell me. It's off a room, you guys get in this, in the same room and don't come out until you get it done. That's what I'm hearing from my constituents and they are absolutely right. So I, I'd say that in the spirit of this garbage coming, contract coming up, don't wait till the last minute, work with us, sit down, administration, city council, let's flesh out any issues and let's move forward on this thing. And I appreciate everything you're doing, Mr. Wright.
All right. So November, December, January, and you have two respondents, correct? Two respondents. And the deadline for those respondents is closed, correct? Are you, is, is the plan to bring somebody forward? So Legal is not going through those? Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, if, 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 if not, that's good.
And there's an evaluation process.
Right.
That's underway and Ms. Weather's gonna address that.
That's good that it's, it is where it's supposed to be.
Yes, very good.
Good morning. Lakeisha Weather, Solid Waste. Can you answer your question one more time?
Is, is there a timeline on when we will, or when a respondent, uh, uh, vendor or someone will come forth from the RFP?
Um, yes, there is a timeline. We plan to have a recommendation for the council either by next meeting or the first of February.
The first of February?
Yes.
And our deadline, our deadline for this emergency contract is when?
Um, it ends March 31st.
And this does, does this give enough time to, or either, uh, I, I would assume one is the current provider, I assume the other is someone that may have to mobilize. Does, does this give time for them, ample enough time for them to mobilize?
Yes.
It does? Okay. All right. All right, all right. Thank you. Of course, we get asked questions. Um, and it's Councilman Harley, you know, then now that the media ask questions. And not wanting to repeat history and it being a week before the deadline. And here is someone to approve, you know? Uh, because you, there has to be time considered that just because you bring somebody to this body does not mean that it would be a guaranteed approval. Each member would could uh evaluate that based on what's presented them. And I, I think you have to have time for that. In lieu of um the publication July 2023 by Shad White uh for state procurement law, what it says is, and I, and I, and I'm saying this because you gotta make time for this. It says that if you present a vendor and it's voted down, and then you negotiate and present another vendor that's voted down, and it says, and it shall, then you shall start the process all over again. And with the time space and the history, I would hope that we would try to bring this up as quicker than possible because it may be that the will of this body may be to proceed with another RFP. Furthermore, I think that there are big disagreements with the RFP because it was strictly done um through with the mayor and the administration. Up on reviewing and looking at state procurement law, it says in the governing authority shell. And the governing authority is seven voting members, including the mayor. And so there's also a discrepancy be- Advice from the beginning, I don't think that we will re-revisiting that again. Uh, but the end of the day, the law is clear. It says the governing authority shell. And did you have any input? Did you have any input? Did you have any input? Okay. None of, none of the governing authority has had an input. So that, that's just giving you a basis on where we're headed. And, and I am competent that we have a city attorney's office that interprets the law, especially at this point. All right. So I'll leave it where that is. But at least interpret the law. Cause it's there. All right, all right. Next items, 53 and uh 48, we need to go into executive session for. Um, was there a report or an announcement? Did I miss it? Say that. Did she join us on virtually? Councilwoman Lee, did she join us virtually for her announcement? All right, Councilman Griselda, did you have an announcement?
Yes, the award for uh, I call it a big meeting. The town hall will be uh February 6th at St. John Missionary Baptist Church um at Mega Evans and Northside Drive. Start probably at six o'clock PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Any, any other announcements, uh, colleagues on the D S? All right, administration announcements? Y'all ain't got no announcements? All right, uh, again, this time of year, we just wanna say, uh, you know, of course, uh, it is good to always remember the dream of Martin Luther King. I hope we can reclaim it uh and live it out. Uh, in addition, as we uh going to uh, you know, a month that is um for people like Mr. Wright and I, Mr. Foot, you know, uh, it's a month where we might have to amp up and spend some money because it's Valentine's, you know? But then also, uh, it is the one month out of the year that we have the opportunity to uh remember our legacy, our history and from whence we came. Uh, and we celebrate Black History. Uh, and I would like to ask, uh, clerks, if you could help um, that every, the two meetings that we have in the month of February, we can start with the quote and by highlighting um, um, someone local um, um, who's a standout when it comes to Black History Month. I think that would be befitting. And if the administration would work with um, in highlighting those, those people, maybe we do two per meeting uh for Black History Month, okay? I think that'd be good. All right, yes?
Mr. Banks, I, I do have one quick announcement. Thank you. Um, I just would like to say thank you to all the crews who've been working tirelessly over the last few days, trying to keep us safe as both drivers and then also with Jackson Water and the work that they've been doing. And I understand even harder work uh as things thaw out for them. But I, I know that these are trying times and we have plenty of people who got out in these remarkably cold temperatures to keep the rest of us safe. And I want to, including our firefighters and our police officers, and I wanna thank them for that.
All right, uh, Councilman Harley.
Along that same line, yes, I'd like to thank all the crews, Public Works and Jackson Water that's out doing their work. One thing about, uh, I would like to mention is that, there was a rumor of water shut, shut offs. And it's been maliciously spread around our city for uh several days now. Uh, I think day before yesterday was first day, then yesterday, a lot of folks are concerned. But there are rumors, uh, speaking with uh Jackson Water and Ms. Ted Hennifin and staff. Uh, if in event of any type of water shut off, the public will be duly noted. If you hear these rumors, oh, citywide shut off, no, no. Just listen to the news and if you have any questions, call Jackson Water at 500-601-500-5200. That's 601-500-5200, uh, 5200. If you have any questions that you need to verify information. Uh, because this, this is just damaging for our city when we have these malicious rumors being spread around. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Look, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, I had an opportunity to talk to Ted Hennifin and I, I will say that this morning, um, is when any source leaks a rumor that there's gonna be a shut off, people would panic and they immediately fill up their what? Bathtubs. So if everybody, think about it, if everybody in North Jackson, you know, coming down, starts filling up their bathtub because of what they heard, South Jackson is the further it has to travel. And so now there are people without water in South Jackson based on, even my neighborhood, but based on someone, you know, just putting out misinformation. Uh, and, and to me, that is intentionally sabotaging. But then only that, my family had to suffer and I had to find ways to make things work so I can be here this morning and smell good and look good. All right.
Really? Okay.
And there's no objection to that. So, uh, the other, the other thing that I would like to announce and I wanna thank Vicki uh for letting me know. Y'all remember Otis? Uh, let's keep him in our prayers. Uh, he is having a major surgery today. Jesus. Uh, to remove a mass on his brain and she wanted us to announce this. All right, and so there's Otis that works uh right out front. He works in the hood building too, though. Yeah, so let's, let's, let's keep Otis in our prayers. Uh, and that, that, that will, that will conclude our announcements. Go ahead.
Just, I just stumbled on one. Please uh keep the family of Deacon Lewis, C. McDaniel's in your prayers. He had home, uh, homegoing celebration was last, last Saturday. But please keep his uh, his uh family in prayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would take that motion to go into executive session to handle item 48 and item 53.
Mr. President, I'm moved that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing going into actual executive session for um discussion of um the item regarding um pending litigation. And ongoing litigation.
Second. All right, it's moving probably second that we go into closed session to discuss going to executive session for item 48 and item 53. Uh, any questions or comments? All in favor of going to closed session to have that discussion? All right. All right, Griselda, I'm finna call you. City Council is out of executive session. Uh, action was taken on item 38, 48. And uh, the action was to table it to the next council meeting, pending more information. Uh, other than that, no other action was taken. Uh, any other, anything else to come before this body? All right, here none other, meeting adjourned.